This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good morning and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting and Goal Setting Meeting for August 13th, 2019. To begin this evening or this afternoon, this morning, I'm sorry. That's what happens with summer meetings, we're a little off schedule. To begin, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public that are here with us in the room are welcome to ask a question, make a comment if they would so choose at this point in time. And seeing that we have no one on this fine August morning here in attendance, to do that, we will move on. Board, may we have a motion, please, for approval of our agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion, please, for approval of minutes for both the July 9, 2019 reorganization meeting and the August 2, 2019 special meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Christina. Does anyone have anything to correct, add, or delete to those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. One of the main issues today that we always deal with is our goal setting, or in our case, our blueprint plan. And so this morning, we're going to talk a little bit about the blueprint plan for 2019-2020, and then ultimately expect to approve that plan. So to begin with, I'll turn it over to Dr. McGowan to go through some of the work that all have been working on dating back to June.
Well, thank you very much, and thanks to all of you for also participating quite a bit in this process. So I'm going to walk you through a little bit of the history, kind of the overall point, where we are with this, and where we landed on the goals. So in 2016, the first blueprint was written, and that was after several years of different types of planning, different approaches to long-range planning, annual planning, SMART goals, different ways to get at the idea that we should be more strategic in our thinking about our work. And a few different benefits. One, we have limited financial resources, of course, as always, and limited human resource capacity, right? There's only so many hours in a day for great people to do their work. So how do you focus and harness all of the great energy and opportunity and resources in a way that maximizes the opportunity for kids each and every year? And that you're thinking long-term, while measuring your results for that year, how do you continue to grow, be consistent, be more efficient, essentially be focused, and tell people in the organization, this is what's most important to us, this is what we should be working on, this is where you should be directing your efforts? Especially in an environment with a lot of really smart, innovative people who would like to be doing a lot of different types of projects, a lot of different type of innovation in different ways, how do you say, that's great, but, how do we focus everybody going in the same direction? How do we all stay on the same page, kind of roll the boat the same way, and be as efficient and focused as possible? So 2016, we arrived at this type of process after trying to do a lot of different type of goal-setting. And this process really hinges on the idea that a large group of community members come together with feedback from the community, discuss how we did the year before, where we might go from there, and recognize organizational needs that have come up, and also how we've done in that work from the previous year to develop plans going forward. And again, our intention to focus the organization. So the document itself, then, is also supposed to be the backbone for our work. So the different committees working on very different topics in the district, whether it's the Safety Committee, the Wellness Committee, Technology Committees, the question always goes back to where is it in the blueprint? And the blueprint becomes this backbone for our work, and a really good filter for asking questions around devoting resources. Well, where is it in the blueprint? Is this part of our plan, or is this something we're researching as part of the plan, or is this something that we should be considering in the future as part of the plan, but not, oh, okay, great, we'll do that, and then we'll do that, and then we'll do that, and have the organization kind of scattered in its effort? We have an annual blueprint day at the end of June, and as I said, about 50 or so stakeholders, including all of you and our leadership team, come together to have a discussion about how we did and where we should be going in the future year. And then in August, that work is taken and refined by all of you and the leadership team in developing the plan even further. So really, what we're asking that group in June to do is to work on the whats. So the specific kind of, these are the things we should be doing, and then the board and the leadership team pushes further into the, how will we accomplish that, and when will we accomplish that, and develops that in a more focused way. Couple changes, though, also in the format this year. So after having had three blueprints, this is the fourth year, we're kind of thinking organizationally about how best to communicate this focus, how best to have the organization all on the same page, and the formats changed a little bit. And some of that was also the result of conversations with that group of people in June that showed this really interesting intersectionality between specific items in the plan. Namely, we looked at how safety, and mental health, and diversity and equity, and technology had a real link between themselves, and that they wove themselves through each of the priority areas. So we started thinking about how do we kind of redesign some of the focus areas, the priority areas, and think about presenting this in a way that's a little bit different, that recognizes both that intersectionality, but also is very clear to people in the organization around what we want them to focus on. Action plans, which previously were developed as part of the August retreat, and kind of this lengthier process of getting through a lot of minutia, will actually be presented to you in October, because we want to include the committees that are working on the work in carving out those action plans, and kind of really developing the, okay, if that's the goal the district has for us, then these are some of the things that we ought to be doing. And some of that has actually already been determined by their work last year, right? So it's just picking up where they left off, recharging that, and starting again in September. But the October blueprint updates to you will really be, and we met with the committee, we went through the plan, and now this is what we're doing through the course of the year to get this work done, in a very clear, direct manner. Then the mid-year update will focus on budget implications for the following year. So again, this blueprint plan being the backbone for the work that we do, and the places where you allocate funds, and the community approves that going into the future. One focus that came up as a part of this discussion, and a part of some work that we were doing at the end of the year in terms of professional development as a team, was a unifying theme or thought, something that we ought to really be expressing more often throughout the organization, almost like a branding of how we approach our work. And where we landed as a group was that we need to continually express that we are focused on every child, every way, every day. So supporting the needs of every child, every way, every day in our work. And we'll continue to think a great deal about that. We're thinking about the intersectionality of the work, again, as I mentioned, diversity, equity, mental health, safety, technology, and academic rigor. And we are clearly identifying in the plan the leaders that are responsible for that section of the blueprint. So that's been evident most of the time in the action plans, but you see, again, in the format, that's spelled out a little bit differently. Also, on the first day of school, principals will be presenting to the faculty, here's what you need to focus on. Some of the feedback that we've gathered in working with the faculty are very well aware of the blueprint, but there's so much in it, there is so much work there, that it can be overwhelming to a faculty member to think, well, then what am I supposed to be working on? Because this is so broad, it really covers every aspect of the organization. And we, as leaders, need to constantly find ways to boil it down, simplify, and directly to say to people, but in your department, this is what you need to focus on. The rest of it is work that is being done by other committees, it will impact you later on, you don't need to worry about it right now, this is what you need to worry about this year. This is the focus for your department, your team. And so principals will now, as leaders should do, disaggregate the broader plan to a very clear focus for their staff and their departments, this is what your group needs to be worried about, and only this this year. We think that helps maximize the result as well. We also acknowledge existing systems in the blueprint in a different way than we have done before, specifically budget and the curriculum review process that has been in place. And that, those are things that have been ongoing, they're a part of our work, but they haven't necessarily been acknowledged by the plan. And if we're saying this is our comprehensive plan for our work, we want to make sure that we're acknowledging those as essential parts of that effort as well. And we reduce the priority areas to really these four specific, a little bit more focused areas, which is systems for support and growth, and that includes safety, that includes budget, et cetera. Mental health and wellness being a real focus for us in this work, each of these being so, so important, and that mental health being something that has risen to the top over and over again in our work and throughout our sector. Academic rigor for all students, making sure that each and every child in our school community is receiving the rigorous approach that they need and deserve. And diversity equity, that this is a thread that weaves itself through all of the areas and all of our work throughout the district, and is very important to point out as a priority. And so you're expressing to the community, these are our priorities. And then, of course, we have more specific goals under each of those, and I'll try and summarize them without reading them all at you. But essentially, in the area of systems, we've identified an overall objective around thoughtful planning and fidelity to these carefully planned systems, and that allows the district to maximize all of the resources, as I mentioned to you before, in honoring our commitment to every child. And our goal in that area is to improve our training and better define, first, the roles of security guards. We've articulated a variety of ways. For example, we want to make sure we're giving security guards more mental health training, anti-bias training, better job descriptions tailored more closely to our school environment, thinking about visual cues, really better communication to and throughout the department. These are all based on feedback and work directly with that department. An assessment tool to think about their job and what resources we are providing to them. Conflict management, including TCI training, which we think is awfully important as well for our security guards, and that we're working with the staff not only in understanding restorative practices, but including our security staff in restorative practices themselves. Also, in the systems area, we're defining, thinking about our capital planning. We need to continue the facility master planning improvement project. We have so much great work that's being done right now, of course, updated daily by Dan Goldman, thank you, Dan, for that. So much work happening throughout the district, all four buildings, and yes, just a quick side note for our thousands of viewers out there, we will be ready for the opening of school, but it's very active and a lot of great work happening in all four buildings. But we need to continue to think about what that looks like long-term for athletic facilities, Brookside, the environmental impact, our carbon impact, and reducing our footprint here in the district, which we're committed to. Thinking about a private sector model for development over time, and our standard for interior classroom renovation. So in other words, what do, after all the pilots we've done around 21st century furniture, what does the standard look like then when we're building new classrooms? What do we want to make sure the elements are that are always included? And we want to continue to think about how we can engage the community in the budget planning process. So a lot of great lessons learned, of course, in the budget process, I think, learned not just by us, but in the community about our budget this past year, and how can we better engage people, both in advocacy, but then also in giving us feedback? And how can we engage our school community, our staff, in thinking about the planned reductions that we have going forward as a result of this past year's budget process, and make sure we're bringing people into that conversation very early? So these are thoughtful planned reductions, and don't happen more last minute. In the second priority area, mental health and wellness, we need to increase our attention to programming for social-emotional health. Last year, we did quite a bit of work in the Second Step Program, we'll continue that implementation, and we're thinking about how that integrates with implementing restorative practices in all classrooms K through 12. And at the September 3 board meeting, you'll hear a more detailed presentation on restorative practices, and how that is being integrated now also into our code of conduct, and that will be a big part of our work going forward. But that plays a big role in the mental health area as well, and supplementing being integrated with the Second Step Program that went really well last year. Of course, the budget did allow for us to expand the Family Navigator position, and that will be a big part of this work as well. How do we establish that position? It worked very well 9 through 12, but how now K through 8 do we integrate the Family Navigator position and expand this link between private providers and providers in school? We're going to continue to expand the building support teams and the RTI committees to think more about mental health than they ever have been before, as opposed to just the academic needs of kids. And mental health was a part of that conversation, but it will now be a greater focus and a greater filter in the conversation. Looking at how do we strengthen our relationships and build trust by having each of the building wellness teams research local wellness programs, and that is a big part of the work that the Wellness Committee has been pushing and working on already. I know Andrea Castens is a big part of that as well, thank you, Andrea, for that. In the academic rigor for all students, I really wanted to see if we had rigor in your eyesight, and if we could make this any smaller on the screen. There's a lot here, you'd not be surprised, Decker Baker's excited there's so much on the screen, and that's why the print is so small. This boils down to making sure, number one, in the first section, that we recognize these great systems that we have in place, and that we continue to promote and sustain those systems. And that's the curriculum review cycle, the evaluation process. We think about understanding by design framework as a way to approach our curriculum reviews, and we think about our grading systems as well, to make sure they align to our district grading philosophy. This is where you start to also see the link back to mental health, right? And our grading philosophy, homework philosophy, homework planning, these all play into the mental health of our students too, so there are a lot of thought went into that part of the conversation. And then we'll promote creativity and innovation as well, thinking, again, as we have been for many years, about alternative coursework, thinking about new multidisciplinary courses for kids 6 through 12, personalized learning opportunities, incorporate more online opportunities for students, and incorporate many other aspects of high-quality creativity and innovation, creative and innovative programming into the program that include inquiry and project-based learning, real-world problem-solving, visible thinking routines, opportunities for ongoing discourse, purposeful use of technology, relevance to college and career, and student choice, which our students have voiced as a need in curriculum, that they're more engaged when they have more choice over the type of work that they're doing. And explicit instruction in the assessment and evaluation of non-academic behaviors for incorporation into the K through 5 report card, including habits of the mind. This has been such a successful approach for us, and now that we're talking, now that we've done so well K2, we're thinking, how do we expand that to 3 through 5 and incorporate that in that work? Kids are leaving Council Rock with that vocabulary, of course, the first elementary school in the nation to be recognized as a habits of mind school of excellence, we're excited now to grow that beyond just Council Rock as well. Also, in the academic rigor for all students area, we're thinking about an intentional focus, again, on mental health by coordinating a study of K through 12 practices for assigning and processing homework assignments, as I mentioned, and a position statement that outlines our future for Brighton in this area. So really think about how do we make more sense for kids, not more homework, but more homework that is effective and balances the mental health needs of our students as well, while continuing to be rigorous in that work. We're focusing on diversity equity as it relates in curriculum instruction. Professional development around cultural responsiveness, including workshops, book studies, job embedded offerings, and thinking about how do we incorporate elements of cultural responsiveness into all content areas with all age levels, K2, 3, 5, and the secondary, thinking about instructional applications for the study and determining connections to the supported pedagogical practices. So inquiry and project-based learning, visible thinking routines, et cetera. Really focusing on cultural responsiveness throughout the curriculum, and a system for evaluating the inclusion of these principles across the district. So we haven't had necessarily a system for going back and evaluating whether or not we've been able to be more culturally responsive, we've talked a lot about it, but how do we evaluate our success in that area? And we're continuing to support the incorporation, of course, of instructional technology as a tool to support high-quality instruction. It is just one more tool, but an important one, and we need to think strategically about how to make sure that is incorporated throughout the curriculum as well, and a big focus on digital citizenship being a part of the conversation, and will be part of the instruction everywhere that we're seeing instructional technology. And finally, the fourth priority area, diversity and equity, and this is the statement that was endorsed by the committee now going back two years ago around the importance of diversity in the district, honoring diversity, but providing an equitable environment for all students as well. And what we will do, and you were presenting all of these, so I won't read them at you, but this first area is about the hiring practices, and essentially the, all the different steps that will be taken to continue to diversify our staff, and the playbook, so to speak, that was created by the Diversity Equity Committee, the Hiring Practices Subcommittee. Mark, I know you participated in that as well, I'm going to start leaving people out, because you've all participated in each of these efforts. But the diversity equity area, we're already seeing some success in this, but these are the very specific strategies being used. We started using some of these strategies this past spring, essentially as the committee was developing them, but they will be full-blown, be a part of our recruitment efforts as we go into the next hiring process now that they've been adopted. But where we could, actually, this past spring, we started to incorporate as many of them as we possibly could, some are a bigger lift than others. Another area is broadening family engagement as well, that was the second of the three subcommittees to the Diversity Equity Committee. We're working on a family mentorship program, working with the PTSA, and developing a list of families willing to be a liaison around language translation purpose, and working with families of color as well, and reaching into the community more to engage other families in helping families. Looking at this creation of a family liaison position, actually, to be a go-to between families and schools in terms of increasing their engagement. We're identifying barriers to family participation. So in thinking around specifically open house, parent conferences, things like that, and recognizing the childcare transportation language and timing is difficult for many people, and how can we accommodate families in a much more family-friendly way, engaging all families differently, and really acknowledging these challenges that people have, and then doing something about it. We're going to make efforts to move the timing of conferences to maximize parent availability as well. Curriculum Council will further study the Funds of Knowledgees theory and applications, and again, prioritizing professional development on engaging families, something we've taken for granted, because a majority of families do engage, but not everybody. So how do we maximize family engagement and make sure this is an all-means-all proposition? The other area that we're looking at, continue to work on, is the disproportionality in identification for special education services. So we're really now thinking about how do we move towards recognizing and understanding the role that unconscious bias is playing in our identification of students and their classification in the services that they are provided. And then we're going to continue to research the disproportionality specifically of African-American classified students, and understand how that compares nationally and locally to other districts, and then what does that mean for our students, and what are the implications of that, and what should we be doing differently? We'll conduct a needs assessment based on a committee that will be formed to specifically study that called the Special Education Program Advisory Council. It will consist of experts, pediatricians, parents, students, staff members, school board members will come to you and ask for your participation in that, members from the state agencies, so vested likely, and local nonprofit leaders, community foundations, et cetera. We're also very focused on restorative practices, as we've mentioned a couple of different times in the presentation, and we'll be presenting to you in September. But as part of the diversity equity work, also as part of the mental health work and social-emotional learning, of course, we'll be implementing restorative practices K through 12, and presenting plans to you for how that will be implemented over time. And really, our work this year will be, we've trained many, many, many people over the summer, and the code of conduct will include restorative practices as another strategy in working with our students, as well as, again, in the mental health area. But also, the plan this year is then to develop, what does this look like, what is the five-year vision for being a restorative practice place, and what does the ideal vision look like for them? So again, restorative practices being a big part of the conversation. Our next steps, the plan will be published and distributed, assuming you approve of those goals today. We will have opening day discussions with our staff, it's communicated within this week, as a matter of fact, in the next couple of days, we'll send that out. But the principals will also be presenting to each staff that conversation I mentioned before about what does this mean to you, and being very focused and direct about that. Action plans will be refined and updated and presented to you in October. You'll have updates in October, January, March, and June to let you know how we're doing, and of course, then to form the basis for not just the budget process, but then our work going forward. Any questions for me?
Anything for Dr. McGowan, or for us? I mean, I guess, you know, from the board standpoint, Kevin, we're very appreciative, and, you know, as a way of further education to our public, you know, most, what we're talking about is a base of work that is many years in its creation and enhancement year over year. And I think we want to certainly thank those that have participated, going back to June, we had a number of community members who participated along with our faculty, staff in the June meeting, and then our July and August meetings and retreats, and certainly leadership team putting it together in a final fashion as far as the hows-type things moving forward. And I think it's really impressive, this year's version, the 2019-2020 version, the specificity now that we have within those areas that we've defined as the most important to us. And clear action plans, benchmarks, if you will, measurable, so we look forward to another great year of work that is almost all underway, some of it a little bit new, but, you know, embedded and working. And, you know, you've mentioned a number of times in your presentation, expanding those in the Brighton school community who are being trained, brought along, involved in different committees and work, and so it's really impressive how this has grown, and now a part of the daily work plan, if you will, so.
Our graduation rate, again, and we'll report to you on this officially as we go forward, is higher than it's ever been, and, you know, that's one measure, there was another ranking that came out that ranked us very high this past week. I look at so many of the things that are happening now that are new, that are innovative, that are just built on great programs that have been in existence for a long time, it's not that these are all brand-new, and it is a result of this work, it is a result of being very focused in our planning, very directed as an organization, and thinking about outcomes for each and every student, and how do we improve organizationally? And those things happening, the recommendations that have been made to you, things like the Family Navigator, I could spend the next hour going through everything that we've done over the last many years, and point to you where that was part of the plan to get to that place, and it only happened because we put it on paper and committed to it, measured it, did it, reviewed it, were thoughtful about it, budgeted for it, and that's how you get to that place. So the plan really does give us a map for where we're going and the work that we need to be doing. It's not that if we didn't have a plan, people wouldn't do great work, they're really talented people, they would. But they would sit down and look at each other and say, okay, so what should we work on now? Instead, this is, you know, community coming forward and saying, this is the work that we'd like for our kids, informed by educators at the table saying, this is work we think we should be doing for kids. How do we focus ourselves and go into the year knowing what we're supposed to get done? And that's where we're at.
Well, I think you're right, and also, I think, again, commendations to you and leadership team for making sure that the previous work feeds the next year's work. You know, so many times in the past in many school districts, you'll work on a project or a committee or a review or any type of strategic planning in one year, and a lot of that falls by the wayside moving forward. We've been deliberate, but you, and Debbie, and Lou, and Carolyn, and really everybody that guide the ship have been very deliberate in capturing that work and letting it feed the next step, so.
Thank you.
That's impressive, so thank you very much. Anything else? Do we have board members, anything further? Then a motion to approve the blueprint for 2019-2020.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We move forward. Next up, please, a motion for approval of the professional development plan provided to us.
So moved.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Christina. And this professional development plan, and Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, but this has to be done, it has to be approved every year, but this is the one that was developed for the three-year cycle ending this school year, right, or this year? So next year, there'll be an effort to, a new committee will update, correct? Okay, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We also have today a first read on two different policies. First of all, please, a motion for approval of the first read on policy 5140, Non-Instructional Business Operations Administration of the Budget.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Marv. Just to remind folks, as we start the policy work for this school year, our procedure on policy review and update is, this is an ongoing process. We engage a number of individuals working on this on a continuous basis, on working with us and providing us material, Jill Vigder Feldman, and also we use the Erie One BOSIS Policy Service. And things go through a vetting and an informational round internally, they come to us as a first read, we usually approve that first read and begin discussion, any changes, it'll then come back to us at a future date for a second read, and then it becomes actual policy. So that's just a reminder to folks. This particular policy on administration of the budget, there was a change in the date of the required statement of total funding allocation for schools in the district, and you'll recall, I think, we discussed this briefly last year, New York State made a change in the education law, has to do with financial reporting, and it's not a simple one, and it's, there's a lot of this that's a bit convoluted and going to be difficult. But essentially, now, all school districts in New York State have to report to the state allocations and funding by school building. We talked about this last year, we talked about some of the reasons for it, other districts have had to do it for one or two years. Now it affects everybody, editorially speaking, I think it's a useless effort in most, with most school districts, quite frankly, but it is what it is. Lou and staff are well down the road on this, and it's a bit of a mess, paperwork-wise and reporting-wise, but that's why the policy change is required, so. All in favor of the first read? Any opposed? Thank you. And then policy, please, a motion for approval, first read policy 7221 on students having to do with early graduation and participation in ceremonies for graduation and activities around that.
So moved.
Moved by Marv.
Seconded.
Seconded by Andrea. And as you've seen, this is a required policy, it's being revised according to Commissioner's Regulation, providing an amendment that students may be prohibited from participating in a ceremony or related graduation activities as a consequence of violating the district's code of conduct. So this is a required update, and it now matches the revised commissioner regulation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our consent agenda today, finally, a relatively short consent agenda, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Julene and seconded by Larry. It does include two gifts that we would like to acknowledge, with our appreciation, a gift from Kelly Harmer to the Visual and Performing Arts Department of a Yamaha clarinet, and also a gift from Aaron Knackman, again, to the Visual and Performing Arts Department, another clarinet, with a very specific model listed here that I'm not going to get into. So we appreciate the gift from both of them of those musical instruments to our Performing Arts Department, and thank them for that. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Board members, any other items of business for today, while we're together?
No.
Dr. McGowan, any view further?
No.
Kim, we're all set. All right, then I will remind, as we get ready to adjourn, our next meeting, I hate to remind and bring this up, but three weeks from today, the eve of school opening on September 3, we will meet at our regular time at 7:00 p.m. That is also our opening day for, of course, teachers and staff, that we will do activities during that day.
Think all the holidays rolled into one.
Well, that's one way to look at it.
Can't wait.
Enjoy, enjoy a safe and, and, or...
End of summer.
Early, or fun end of summer, and pack as much as you can in the next three weeks,